So we will call the board meeting to order. Seven thirty-three?
Seven thirty-two.
Seven thirty-two, okay, great. All right, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance in all states.
Pledge of Allegiance. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have the attendance sheet? Let's make it this way, great, all right. First, welcome to everyone here, congratulations to the new soon to be officers. And now we'll go into taking the oath of office. So if Nancy and Vera can come up one at a time, we'll, have you pledged it? One at a time, yes. We're gonna go to the flag.
It's next to the, next to the.
Yes.
I think we can all.
Yes. I support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And I faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Board of Library Trustees for a term to expire. All right, and I faithfully discharge the duties of the Office.
And I faithfully discharge the duties of the Office.
Of Board of Library Trustees.
Of Board of Library Trustees.
For a term to expire.
For a term to expire.
Due 30th of 2020.
June 30th of 2020.
And you shall be.
And you shall.
According to the best I know.
According to the best.
Good. I, Nancy Weinberger. Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office. Of Board of Library Trustees. For a term to expire June 30th, 2029. In New Rochelle, New York. According to the best of my ability. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
But to have next order of business, we'll turn over to the nominating committee for report and recommendations.
Yes. I will give the report of the nominated committee. The nominating committee consisted of myself, Tatiana and Thala. We deliberated and we have come to the recommendation to nominate Lucille Renwick as President of the Board, Corey Galloway as Vice President of the Board, and myself as the new Secretary of the Board. So I will make a motion to nominate Lucille as President, Corey Galloway as Vice President, Rhiannon as Secretary. And I will ask if there's any discussion, any comments on the motion. Otherwise, I will ask for a second on the motion, please.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we have a new board leadership.
Great.
Congratulations.
So. So we were, we are slightly behind on our nominating. We should have done this last month, but being that we're doing it now, we're gonna move the order of business to have Lucille take over the rest of the meeting as the incoming president. And we'll start with the approval of the minutes.
Sounds good.
All right.
Lovely game of using the chairs. You get your names.
And my name, yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you to the, to my fellow colleagues in the board. Thank you to the nominating committee. And I do not take this lightly, and I am looking forward to working with you all and in leading this board. Thank you. The next order of business is the approval of the minutes. I think everybody received electronic versions of the minutes. There are copies for both Nancy and Vera to review. These are the minutes from the June meeting. And I will first ask if anyone has any questions or comments with regard to the minutes from the June meeting.
No, nope.
Okay, hearing none, I will make a motion for the passage of the June 2024 minutes. I cannot remember the exact date of the meeting. Thank you. And 13th, 13th, the June 13th, 2024 minutes for approval. Can I get a second?
A second.
Seconded by Corey, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on to regular business, we have a report from our representative from the Westchester Library System.
Thanks so much. Few points, so the 2024 Westchester County budget did not fund WLS to the level that was anticipated with an expected shortfall of about $157,000, which is about 10% below budget for the year. This doesn't affect any core operations. This money was designated for certain special projects that will just be reorganized. It shouldn't have any further downstream effects. WLS is potentially proposing replacing all the public computers that are installed at member libraries with, in 2024 versus replacing all the 400 PCs across the whole library system over the course of 2024 to 2026. And that's what potentially affects Neurashell. The reason for potentially replacing them earlier is due to higher costs that are anticipated from the vendor in terms of supplying the hardware and the software. So the WLS Board Trustees continues to consider a request of about $277,000 to be added to the 2024 operating budget if the request were to be completed basically two years ahead of schedule rather than two years moving forward. Member libraries, which include Neurashell, are charged about $900 per device per year, which includes maintenance of hardware, help desk, help desk support, productivity software, which includes, for example, Office, cybersecurity. And that price is anticipated to increase to about $1,100 per device in the year 2025. So, I mean, certainly I welcome any input, and I'm happy to share that with Terry, WLS, in terms of preference, in terms of replacing the PCs, hardware, software, 2024, which would be in the next five months versus over the next two years. Yeah.
I have one question, David, so these are public-facing computers?
Correct.
Okay, so these are the ones that the public.
Exactly.
Okay, and are they, the replacing, I understand about the anticipated cost or the increasing cost, but are the computers, was like, there a survey done or are the computers like failing?
They sort of get replaced at a certain timeline just because it gets more, I think, difficult to maintain them, both from a hardware and software perspective.
Understood, okay.
Any other questions for David?
Does anybody have thoughts in terms of just preference of whether Neurashell would be interested in earlier replacement versus over a two-year replacement? I'm happy to convey that, obviously, I only have one vote member that.
We have a meeting this week with the leadership team, I can share that with them and then just, you know, put it to the.
Yeah.
Team and say, is there a preference?
Yeah, so just let me know, and I'm happy to convey that to.
And the question is the preference of the hardware or?
It's basically everything, it's the whole package.
And the whole package, like the Office package and all that stuff, okay. Thank you.
David, by when do you need to know, what's the timeline?
I mean, you know, I think this is not a decided issue by any stretch, but it's been proposed by the IT Division at WLS. So, you know, any feedback you can give me probably in the next few weeks, I think is more than sufficient. And again, this is very contingent on a large group of funds, which may not necessarily be approved by the WLS Board of Trustees because these funds basically have to be fronted in advance rather than spread over a two-year period.
Great. Any other questions? Thoughts? Great, so we'll get back to you soon as we can, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the president's report, I will try and keep this brief. Again, I am very excited and would love to welcome Vera and Nancy to the board. I'm looking forward to working with both of you. Like your fellow board members, it is important for all of us to support the library in its mission as a vital community center and resource with an aim to improve the life of, I'm reading the mission now, so just, I think it's important to just kind of get that on the record, with an aim to improve the life of every resident of Neurashell and to encourage learning in all stages of life while protecting intellectual freedom and providing fair and equal access to information, all of which is vitally important in the moment that we are in right now. So as part of your welcome and introduction, and for all my fellow colleagues of the board, you will see that we have the latest version of the New York State Handbook. It is the 2023 version. It is a really valuable resource for, for all trustees to have, and I encourage you to read it, not necessarily cover to cover. I mean, it's, it's, it's not, you know, riveting, but it is really important and has, and has a lot of rich information. And so it's, it's always helpful to be able to come back to this multiple times. So take some time, go through it, and of course, if you have any questions, you have other colleagues who can support you and provide that information. I wanted to remind all the board members that we have a conflict of interest form that everybody was sent electronically, and we all need to sign that today, so we'll wait until the end of the meeting, and then we'll sign it together, and we can return that to Jessica. The, the board has several committees, of which I believe you all are aware, and committee assignments are updated every single year when new board members are elected. And so those assignments will be coming up shortly in, before the next meeting. And so what will happen is we'll reach out to each of the board members and have a conversation, and each board member chairs a committee and then serves on two others. So we'll be in touch and we'll work through that. And finally, the board calendar, let me make sure this is a finally, this is a finally. We have, everyone should have a copy of the board calendar. And this is the schedule for our 2024, 2025 library board sessions, meetings. And the one change, you'll see that it says August 8th. And, and as you know, all of the board meetings start at 7:30. There is an event that is taking place in this space on that day. And so the staff needs enough time to clear the space and then set up the tables and, and everything. So there's a quest, request to start that meeting at 7:45 rather than 7:30.
Which day was it?
It's August 8th. Rhiannon? Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion, can you put it in? I'm gonna make a motion if we can approve the schedule for the 2024, 2025 library board meetings with a noted change to the August 8th date, that it will have a start time of 7:45 PM instead of 7:30. May I get a second? Seconded in by Corey. Any opposed? Any questions?
No.
Great, thank you. We will update the website and any, any documents, any external documents that are going out. The director's report, Jocelyn.
Thank you. And welcome Nancy and Vera to your first meeting. Good, good evening trustees, good evening everyone in the audience. I'll try to keep my brief too. So I just, I'll start with operational things and just some follow-ups from the last meeting in terms of the window repair, the 2024 construction grant, and the air handlers and the HVAC. And so the window repair, if you recall, we talked about the cracked window on Lotton Street and going forward those repairs, and you all approved on amounts up to, I think, $20,000? We ended up spending, I think, just under 10 with the tax thing that we use. What's that paper, the tax thing that we can take off because we're nonprofit? The word's not coming to me, what'd you say, tax exempt form, sorry. All right, my brain's turning on, the tax, this tax exempt form. So the window has been ordered and it's on its way. So it's in process now, so I just wanted to give you all that update. So thank you for approving that, and so we'll have a solution soon, it's happening.
Can I ask a quick question about that?
Sure.
Was the, was that the 10,000 was, was, was above the 5,000 insurance deductible that we talked about last time?
I don't think we used the insurance deductible because we talked about, did we wanna, do you wanna tap the deductible for something so small when it might be a bigger thing that comes and then you've already used it for something that wasn't that much? It could be something down the pipe that we don't know. So that was an option that we had, but I, we didn't use the insurance deductible for that.
And I think Jean mentioned something about having the, that building contingency fund, there was 30,000. So that's what it came out of?
Yes.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for saying that. And it was, came in a lot less than we thought, so we booked that one. And so I just wanted to update you that it's happening. They were here last Friday to give final size and they're ordering the window, and it'll take about a week. So just that's up there on that. The construction grants, so we talked about the, I gave a brief overview of that in June, as is the process every year. So what we were gonna focus on this year is the second floor bathrooms need to upgrade, this, the staff room on the second floor, and then the carpeting, repurpose, and then the roof over this area we're in right now. Those are the projects we're going to go for, for the construction grant for next year. This year, it doesn't have anything for the children's branch. Yeah, the UGNA branch, and it doesn't have anything like for the children's area or the adult area. We're trying to focus on some structural things and some more foundational ones this year. And we talked about that with the team, so it's not something that's coming top down, we talked about that just in terms of if we wanna, if we built anything else cute or fancy and we don't have the foundation, like a roof and like some decent bathrooms, it's not gonna make a lot of sense. And so I think we had an email about, from the New York State, about the Westchester County's portion of the funds, which is gonna be about 2 million, so that's how much we have to tap with all the other Westchester County libraries. I think you mentioned that last time, David. And so we also have to put that in mind to put out a project that the, the foundation is gonna back, because you have to have, I think it's 25%, and then something that's feasible that you wanna put forward. So we started at the estimates, I have them, so I won't, you know, I won't go into that minutia detail, but I'm just giving the update that we have the estimates. And so next month, what you'll have is a resolution, so we'll be ready for that part, where we'll say, okay, so we'll have hard money in terms of how much they'll cost. It won't be a pie in the sky thing, it won't be, I think the bathrooms are, we have, we have estimates from actual tradespeople. So that's what we're working on now, so from, from the last time I told you up until now, and then we continue to have them come in, so for the August meeting, just to prep you, that's what we'll have. We'll, we'll have it all ready to go for you all to have a resolution because we have to turn it in in August to, to do the application. I'm, I'm not sure it's towards the end, but I, I just know the, the timeline fits nicely because we have a meeting on the 8th, and it's due like towards the end of August. I don't, I don't have the exact date, but I've talked to Jessica, Jessica and Jean enough times about it, and I know that's when the due date is, and so that's, I just wanna prepare you all because I don't like to surprise people. But I think that's been the pattern that you all have been doing, so I'm following the template. Any questions about that, or like the plan forward about what we are.
Just a quick question in terms of the, the number of estimates are you, you getting for each? Is it, is it like two to three for, for each project of work? Is it that they're doing the full body of work, it's one company doing a full body of work, providing an estimate? So just how many estimates are you anticipating receiving?
So the estimate is just for the purpose of submitting the grant. When we actually do the work, we can do the two and three, but this is so, it's not me as a librarian saying, I don't know, this is like this should cost, you're actually, you're trying, you're getting hard numbers from a subject matter expert in terms of plumbing, roofing, or whatever. So this one isn't the one where you do the two or three, like we have people that we kinda know we can call pretty quickly that we've used before, that can give us some round numbers to put forward and say, this is about whatever it costs to do a bathroom, to do a kitchen. And then we don't have to use them ever again, we may use them, we may not, and then we can get the estimates. But to do the grant, that's what they ask me, you have to have some kind of estimates that are based, you know, in reality. Because they know, you know, we might put anything on there.
Nothing.
No, no, never, never. I mean, we as librarians, because we're like, you know, we can, we can use a million for the bathroom, just say it. So that's what the estimates are gonna represent. And then the air handlers, so the air feels good today, they are still, they're struggling still. So we, we did reach out to Senator Fernandez, I have, I did go to the legislative breakfast, I've, I've seen her there. Jean did follow up and just say, you know, hey, anytime you're ready for the, the supports that we had talked about. And so we'll just keep nudging for that, for those supports to get that fixed because, just to update Vera and Nancy, our HVAC system is kind of at the end of life, and we need a new chiller, we need, it needs to be replaced. And at the replacement, totally, the total cost would be in the millions, but there are things we could do like immediately that are like in the, in the five figures, and so we're trying to, we're trying to approach it just to keep the air on, what we could do that's manageable, we, we've gotten an offer of support from the Senator, and so we're trying to follow up on that, so we can keep getting, so now on, we're still working, it's still on. But, so that's just up that, I don't have a lot more than that, we haven't heard back, but we're, we're staying on it just to, you know, just to be a squeaky wheel, so we're not forgotten in the process to get that support, to get that done. That's gonna be a big one.
Sorry, just another question, do we have, the HVAC and the air handlers need to be fixed and replaced? There is a cost to that, we are waiting for a response from Senator Fernandez. What is a plan B in terms of covering that cost?
Well, I mean, there is, Rob also, Rob is our facilities manager, Rob also sent me a course of action and with some, with a price tag, with an estimate from Carrier, so that's the other thing. We, Carrier is giving the estimates, Carrier is the person who is our HVAC system, that's our brand. It's my recommendation that we use them to, you know, do the maintenance. It comes with warranties, they'll come back, you generally have the same one or two people. It does cost a little bit more, it's a premium for that, but then you're not using three and four and five different people coming and looking at it and, so I don't know. That is what he sent me, it costs about $80,000, what he sent me recently. And so that's just a heads up too of something to think of for fiscal year that we might think about versus in the millions. Just on the, then inside.
So, so AD is needed, and the Senator has promised 15, that's what he said last time. So there's still kind of a delta that we have to figure out how to make it.
All these people.
Right, right.
So he's trying to mitigate. And he also said he's only recently about some updates in characters that, to replace parts of the children, so we'll. And it was in that. Which is still a step, but.
So, since you've been here, have you experienced the HVAC being down?
It hasn't been down, it's been warm a few days, a little bit warm, like it was working like weekly, like. But it never went all the way to hell, but today it's good.
Right.
Worked well, so I have it on all behalf of its, the fear present. Just that they, I don't know what they, what they've been doing, or if they could talk over it, but it's been working, but it's been as a parent, we are this as a.
Right, that's what, we're calling something, right.
Yeah, I was wondering, because you, I'm sorry, were you gonna say?
Yeah, it's a phone, just to understand, when you say it was a little warm, so, because I had known a little bit about HVACs, it works or it doesn't work. So there must have been areas that might have been down, which caused certain. So there must have been areas that might have been down, which caused certain warmth, but then it's not completely down, so the building isn't smoking hot, but, you know, certain areas may be warmer than others, so that area, those areas may be down.
Where did it start? Rob prescribed to me a sentence, but he'll tell me that the air was running at sixty percent, like he'll tell me that way. And so when he tells me that, no, I think the man is the first to hundred percent, if the air was on, I'll be able to argue. If it's running at sixty percent, it's, it's gonna feel much differently than it was at a hundred percent, so it's gonna be a little warmer than it's supposed to be. So he hasn't told me that, and, um, that it's been totally off, and that isn't what, but it's definitely warmer in areas. It's definitely, you know, it's, it's definitely, different offices are super cold. Some are, you know, it's, it feels lukewarm, I guess that's the best way to describe it, today feels fine. So.
Well, I was just wondering, because the, the library is an official cooling center for the city, are there any resources that we could take advantage of from the city or from the county or from the state that would support upkeeping this facility as a cooling center, I mean, maybe there are, is something that we could tap into?
You know, that's the challenge of libraries, Brianna, they, we're often tasked to, um, to address the problem, the, the, of the community.
Yeah.
But then the support isn't there to, to do that, so that, that's a very good question.
So maybe it's worth reaching out to the city, reaching out to the county, just to see if there's anything in terms of financial support that they could
Right, especially if you have that expectation.
Yeah.
And you want us to be on the list.
Right.
That would be great.
There are some energy efficiency grants that both the city know a lot about, yeah, that I think we can look into.
I just have another question, so for, if we were to go with Carrier and Carrier's, um, or the plan that Rob presented to you, where Carrier is then able to replace specific parts of our handlers, instead of obviously this complete overhaul, which would be our dream.
That would be ideal.
That would be ideal, right.
Sent me some information that said it could be partially fixed.
Right.
So it would, you know, it could still live along, it's not ideal, but it's something versus doing nothing at all.
Right.
You know, if we continue doing nothing, there will be a day where I will, or whoever's sitting in this seat will say, it's just down and we don't have it at all, and then there might not be a choice, it might have to be a million dollar replacement of everything or something in the high six figures. You know, where I came from, um, before we had to replace the chiller, we had one that was broken and one that was working. And it took a year to get one, and we just crossed our fingers, the other one would die, that was a half a million, it was a quarter of a million dollars for just one. It had to be raised down the street and raised on the crane and all that stuff. So, um, you know, that's just, and it was just, it was for one building, but it was, it was twenty years. So this is about the same, this one is over twenty years, the system that's in that right now, uh, maybe about twenty-five years or so, so it's time.
So my question is, would Carrier immediately be able to, like, is there a timeframe in terms of them coming in to replace parts? Because obviously this is more of a concern for the next like three months, right? And then, so we'd wanna have something that can be enacted very quickly.
I feel like it is immediate, because that's, that's the beauty of having them, um, come service it, you have a person, you have a contact person, and, you know, show them the money. And you put them, and then they'll schedule someone to come in and, and do it, and they know the scope of work too. And so, uh, it's, and then I, you know, I appreciate the measure of saying, well, you don't have to go to the pool, if you can't do that, there is, you know, that's something I haven't heard before as a director, I, you know, that could have been something, like I just said, I have that fork of anyone. The words, that's just like, just buy that, I wish somebody had said, you know, you can fix pieces of it. So I appreciate them even saying that, you know, like there's an option to do something to remediate, you know, the past end of life HVAC system that's right now. And so that's just something to think about for, um, for, for the upcoming fiscal year.
Thank you.
Thank you, it would be great, um, as to Brianna's point, to reach out to city officials and county officials to, to find out what support we can get, given that we are, um, an essential cooling center for the city, that's one, and then to, um, follow up with Bureau's suggestion of the energy efficiency grants, and if there's anything that, that, um, we may have access to. And finally, if you could share with the board the information from Rod, just to get the perspective of what the lifetime looks like, would be great, thank you.
And then, um, so that was, that was it for the follow-ups, so some new business is the security contract, uh, it's time for the new one. It's the new fiscal year. I don't know if that's in your packet, I think it should be. So let me just go to my notes about that. So for our security personnel, it's the current scope of security services. Current weekly hours are a hundred thirty-six hours and, um, for a cost of three thousand nine hundred twelve dollars and twenty-eight cents. The annual total is seven thousand seventy-two hours at a cost of two, two hundred thousand, two hundred and three thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents. Sure, the annual cost for the security, so the guys that we see that watch over us, and will be here tonight, uh, it's two hundred and three thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-six cents.
For the total hours?
For seven thousand seventy-two hours.
So what is the
So, um, the, the hourly rate currently is, um, eighteen dollars an hour for, um, for, um, a security officer, the supervisors are twenty-two dollars and twenty-five cents an hour. And then the supervisor's overtime is thirty-three dollars and thirty-three, thirty-eight cents. Now, how they bill us, how they bill us though, is for that security officer at the pay rate of twenty-six, uh, at, at eighteen dollars, they bill us twenty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. And for the supervisor, they bill us thirty-two dollars and forty-nine cents an hour. And then for the, for the, well, I mean, they're business, so they gotta pay them, and so they're, they're cheap, that's their profit. And so, um, the supervisor's overtime, they bill us at forty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. And so there is an increase, because of course there is. It's, it's about ten thousand dollars for the fiscal year. And so now, same number of hours, weekly total of one thirty-six, annual total of seven thousand seventy-two. So the pay rate goes up a dollar, so, um, the pay rate will be nineteen dollars an hour, supervisor twenty-three, twenty-five. And then the supervisor's OT thirty-four, eighty-eight. And then we'll be billed at, for the, for the security officer will be billed at twenty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents. For the supervisor, we'll, we're billed at thirty-three dollars and ninety-five cents. And then the supervisor's OT, we're billed at fifty dollars and ninety-two cents. So the total is about ten thousand more than it was last year. And, and they gave some reasoning behind that too, they, they, you know, there have been some new labor laws put in place, and there are some costs of keeping pace with the minimum wage laws too, I think the minimum wage is like eighteen dollars an hour right now. They're, they're at the minimum wage right now at the eighteen, so now they just made it a dollar more for the security officer. And so that's part of why the increase is, we have really good security officers, I, I really appreciate their approach, they know, they know the customers' names. They are very proactive, they don't, I, I would say they don't, um, they don't exacerbate things, I've had experience where I've had security officers like make things worse. Um, I've also had a meeting with other directors in Westchester County, talking about security, and they talked about how terrible the ones they had are, and who do we have? And so, um, I, I think they're, they are valuable. And this is the cost of what they are, so it's, it's ten, so the current cost for the year for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five is two hundred thirteen thousand nine hundred fifteen dollars and fifty-two cents. So that's almost on the nose, about ten thousand dollar increase, um, with that dollar or so in their pay rate. Now, we're charged more than a dollar.
Right.
That's what they're, you know, that's kind of what it shakes down to, and that, you know, he did all that rationale about keeping just a little bit of a minimum wage, which helps us get a quality of officer, better than a lot of the local libraries. You know, that I sat in, um, and they reported out what they have, they are not happy with what they have. Any questions? So I'm just operating to put a motion, um, because then if you all group it outside, and then it'll want to run up the fiscal year.
It's a four point five percent increase.
Say that again.
It's a four point five.
Five percent increase. So you're asking for a motion, right?
Make a motion to approve the, uh, new security contract, um, with the unnecessary changes and a financial increase. Ten thousand, of ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you, we do have great security guards.
Personnel report, so moving on to personnel. It was my first meeting, so thank you, Jessica, Jessica did give me the thing, I, I don't know what I was looking for, I thought it was, I don't know, it's right here. And so, uh, I'm gonna go back and, um, mention Anique Rodriguez's retirement last month on five thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. She was a full-time librarian one, congratulations, Anique, for her service, thank you, thank you for her service here. Uh, her annual salary was seventy-two thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety cents, that's what she went up on. And so, uh, for this year, uh, for this year, for this month, uh, we have, we always have summer staff. So the addition for this month is our summer staff at HCL. It's Rihanna and Ben, Benu, and her start date was on seven eight, and her salary is sixteen dollars an hour, so she's a part-time summer staffer. We have that every year, so that's the current one for July.
Are these kids or?
Hold on.
Yes. Yeah, are these kids, are they adults? Teens, awesome. Yeah, that's great.
For two separate motions, yeah?
Yep.
Um, okay, I'll make a motion to, um, approve the retirement of Anique Rodriguez. Uh, her last day was, uh, May thirty-first of this year, um, could I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Anique, and have a nice retirement. And then I will make a second motion to approve the part-time hiring of summer staffer Rihanna and Benu at a, a start date of July eighth, as a salary of sixteen dollars an hour. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome, Rihanna.
More, uh, some more new business on the personnel side of the pages. So, um, so more money, more money here, so the pages, this was something that was, Jean had brought, um, to the attention before our meeting, and he said it was gonna be in July, and so, um, it was discussed that the pages would receive a two point five percent wage increase. That was because they weren't, if I am, Lucille or Corey correctly, if I'm, if I'm not saying this correctly, they weren't included with the union wages, they're non-union employees, so they did not get a bump. And they, we've given some of the other non-union employees bumps, and so these might be the last few that haven't gotten. And so, um, it's a two point five percent increase, I think in total it equals a few thousand dollars, maybe two thousand for the year, because, um, so like one person's at sixteen dollars, the new wage would be sixteen dollars and forty cents. Uh, one person's at, um, it's about like a fifty cent plus, so increase for each person. Okay, forty cents, I'm sorry. So it, it equals a two point five percent wage increase, they haven't received one, um, yet. And so this was gonna be on the July, since we're in the new fiscal year, I assume, and so I'm just bringing it forward. Oh yeah, it's a forty, it's a forty cent increase for all the pages, and we're talking one, I think it's about ten pages. And including the vacant position, um, that we would hire for at the new rate of sixteen forty. And so, um, I'm operating, I'm putting that information, um, for, for a motion.
I'll make the motion, just, um, point of clarification is, as Johnson said, for Nancy and Vera, we have, um, two, two to three full-time staff members who are non-union. And so, um, to be equitable, we also provide them with their increases at the, at or around the same time that we do for our unit members to try and keep, um, pace with that. And the pages are also those non-union members who we do. That was, um, not brought at the last meeting, but it is brought at this meeting. Therefore, I will make a motion to accept the two point five percent increase for, um, the Neurichelle Public Libraries pages. Eight, nine, ten, eleven, there are eleven pages and, um, it will be retroactive to July first, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a second? Seconded by Vera, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion consists.
Okay, um, two more things, really quickly. Our, our, our archive librarian, uh, David Rose, just wanted me to share with the board that we, um, have finished three new finding guides for, um, our collections. So we have the Noel Branson Papers, the Bodie Family Papers, and the Board of Education Records. And, um, so they did re-folded and organized, and people continue to add to them, and so that, I mean, that's really exciting. I, I think he's done a lot with that archival collection, uh, and you don't really see that a lot with public libraries. And, um, and so that's a major update, when you have three collections that have been able to be updated, so he just wanted me to make sure I made the board aware that that was happening. And so there was recently a, um, a, uh, a webinar about some opportunities on the, on the arts and culture side, so hopefully there's maybe some things he can take advantage of to keep expanding on the work that he's doing, but I just wanted to briefly share that, I said I would share it. Um, and he also has been talking to Sil, Sylvia Hammer of the Hope Community Services, about the acquisition of the Hope's historical records as well, um, as a records of the Shiloh Baptist Church. And so he's meeting with them as well to get their records to archive, um, to keep the city's records going and keep the historical records. Uh, and that just goes back to that old school piece of what libraries do, is, you know, collecting information and being the keeper of history and information, so, um, that's an important thing, so I'm just sharing. As I said, I definitely would, um, so. And the last thing is, did you, I, I didn't mention anything about Friends or the foundation, um, we had the final meeting, did we wanna mention about the, um, officers or anything? I just okay, I think so too, maybe, because we have a meeting in June, but we're good, okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I didn't have it in mind.
Well, we, we certainly can do it again.
I just, I don't wanna leave them out, because they're very important.
We have that information in front of us.
Very important, okay, um, I, we, there, there was a final, there was a, the annual meeting in June, where they had the officers switch over, and, um, so Chris is, is leaving, and I know, yes, and they have a dual officer role. I know that, I don't know the people's names, do you know the people's names?
No.
No, me neither, I, I can find them, but, um, and the Friends, I, I didn't get anything from them, um, as an update, but I know they have summer hours right now that are continuing, and the sales are continuing, so please, um, don't forget to support the Friends and continue to, um, up to the sales. So those are just quick updates, I don't wanna, I don't want to miss mentioning the foundation of the Friends. So they have, they've had a turnover of their officers, just like we had tonight at our meeting. So that's, that's it, that was it for me, thank you, okay, thank you.
Okay, we will move on to committee reports. Got the budget committee?
No.
Buildings and grounds committee, I believe that the chair of Buildings and Grounds was
Was Beth.
Was Beth.
I think.
Was that, no, it was Whitney, it was Whitney. And so as a second, I will say, there is nothing to report. Community relations.
Yes.
Always good things to report.
It's always the funnest part of the meeting, because I get to report all the great stuff that, that our amazing staff is doing for our patrons. And, um, last time I kind of condensed it a little bit to the highlights, and I think I would do that again, because that was popular. Instead of going through the whole, but there are so many great events, I could go on forever. Um, I wanted to, um, share how busy, uh, the beginning of the summer has been for the library and how many events and programs, um, they creatively offer to keep our kids, uh, busy, um, i- in the cool building, um, with fun activities and learning and growing, even though they're not going to school. One event that was really, really popular this past month was our Rainbow of Reading with, um, our wonderful, uh, for our wonderful drag story hour, which happened on June fifteenth. There were thirty three kids with their parents. And I just wanted to highlight, um, how much, how many positive responses came through social media about that, the the pictures that were posted that were really fun to look at. Um, so I'm just gonna read a couple of the highlights, um, just to share how excited people were. Um, one comment was, thank you, New Shell Public Library, for bringing this to your library. We came from Connecticut to attend and were blown away by, away by how inclusive your library is. The pride display of books was amazing. Both of my kids, seven and twelve, loved it and talked about it all weekend. Love wins. Um, one more, this was a beautiful afternoon, so thankful my children had the privilege to spend time with Angel and hear her message of love and acceptance of all, love will win. And it went on and on and on, there were a hundred and something comments and likes, um, about this event. So it's, it continues to be really popular and and and, like the comments say, show how inclusive, um, the, our library is. Um, I think we can all be very proud of that. Um, and so I want to highlight, um, a few events that are coming up uh, in the next few weeks and the last few weeks of summer. Feels like we're rushing through summer break. Um, the International Music and Dance Festival, that was really super popular in in previous years, is back. Um, has begun already on July ninth, it runs through August thirteenth. Um, it is, uh, right here in this theater every Tuesday evening at seven o'clock. It's six, uh, weeks free festival, uh, six, uh, a six week festival with free events. Has diverse lineup of music and dance traditions, and it will, um, culminate with a, um, performance outside in the park. And it will be the, um, Calipoli Summer Mexican Dance Workshop, which was also really popular and really well attended last year, I remember. That is August thirteenth, uh, seven o'clock outside in the park. Um, and I also wanted to be sure, um, to give a little bit more information about this workshop, shop that Capuli puts on. Um, it began today, um, and it will be, um, they give three classes on every day, um, for the different age groups. So, uh, five to seven, eight to thirteen, and fourteen to adults. And again, it runs through the thirteenth where they have their final performance, and the program is funded by Arts Alive, the Arts Alive brand from Arts Westchester. So, um, encouraged to bring your children and participate in the Mexican dance workshop. And another, um, summer, uh, series that the library is, uh, presenting is the Summer Concerts. Saturday Summer Sings, it's called, for children and families. It kicks off on July twentieth at eleven AM, right here in this theater again. Um, and they are concerts for children, uh, age two and up. And, um, you're, all families are, um, invited to attend. Just make sure all of these events are free, but make sure to register online, um, to reserve your spot. Um, and then I just want to make sure that, um, it is known that the BTO Help and Learning Center continues all of their great offerings to patrons to support, um, with online help with government benefits, food support. Um, and, um, specifically, um, I don't know the dates of this, maybe Johnson, you can help me, but, um, the section eight, there's a week long event to help patrons, uh, there's a collaboration between the library and and city staff, um, to, uh, to advise patrons with federal housing opportunities, uh, under section eight. Um, did that happen already? I'm not sure. It happened already, so that was a week long, um, service at the library, um, provided. And, um, all the other great, uh, uh, online assistance and in in library assistance, like Nola Republic, and, uh, continues through the summer. Um, and all the information about the dates of the programming and the BTO Learning Help and Center can be found on the website. That concludes my report.
So brief, thank you very much. But so rich with information.
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
Yes.
I just want to mention the Summer Reading Kickoff Party, that was really great. And that's continuing for teenagers and also for elementary age. And yes, elementary age children as well.
And they get credit for that, when they go back to school, right?
Exactly, so.
They get prizes at the end of it.
And there were, um, there was free book distribution, but the children were really excited about it. And there's challenges, like you just mentioned, Rihanna and Tatiana. So the more that you read, um, then you can get stickers or prizes, and, um, it's really incentivizing the continuation of reading for our children, so, and I think that was well attended too.
That's a great program and really important in the summertime, right, to continue the party. Thank you for having me. The finance committee. Um, uh, personnel committee, that would be me, I'm happy to say that it is quiet and there is nothing to report. And policy committee.
Yes, so we are working on our programming policy. Uh, policy committee did meet, and we will have something to report at our next meeting.
Thank you. Um, special projects committee was led by Beth Acicella, and, um, since she is no longer with the board, I can safely report that there is nothing to report. Always. All right, it's, uh, now the time for public discussion. Seeing none. I know, we're just looking at you.
Everybody look at Judah.
Just for the public record, we have our wonderful representative, Judah Holstein, who is in the audience, um, to listen in on the wonderful work of the library, so thank you for attending. But seeing no public, uh, I am going to make a motion to adjourn this, uh, July twenty twenty four meeting of the library board and our new library board members. Can I get a second? I know, we want a second.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. It is approved, eight twenty nine. Thank you all, have a good night.